And with us today we have and with us today we have Pastor Sticker and he is the Associate Pastor for Students and Missions and he is from the First Baptist Church of Gulfport and we so glad to have him here. We invite him to the conference.
I'd be happy to. Let's pray together. Father, we bow before you today grateful for breath, Father, something that I take for granted often and many of us do, but Lord, we know that every gift, every gift comes from you, Lord, as we look out our windows here on the beautiful Mississippi Gulf Coast and see the sunshine or even even understand and acknowledge and are grateful for the favor that you showed us last week with Hurricane Delta missing us, God. We're grateful for who you are and we do acknowledge those that are putting the pieces back together across our state and across the southeast part of our country. Father, we pray for healing, we pray for clarity today, God, as this group meets and they lead our coastal communities. Father, we pray that they acknowledge you first and foremost, Father, but then they acknowledge that, Father, the representation is such a high honor here on the coast and we're grateful as citizens to entrust in them wisdom that you've given them, Father, for them to use that wisdom to glorify you, Father, and to make this place that we get to call home, this great place we get to call home here on the Mississippi Gulf Coast, to make it a better place. So, Father, for all of the things that will come upon the agenda today, Father, would you be in the midst of this? Father, would you glorify every word that's spoken in this place? Father, would you soften hearts and open minds, Father, to ideas? Lord, would you keep the main thing at focus, Father, as in this setting, we figure out ways to better our community? And, Father, would you unify us and we'll be sure to give you the credit for everything? In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. And thank you for serving children and children.
Thank you.
The Constitution of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Billy Rowe called in next very, everyone here. Okay, this is a public forum. This is a lot to recognize, and I'm going to see the Mississippi Hotel and Lodging and she discussed this third-party sellers and sellers. You think they take your man's call?
Hello.
And let me see your address today. Your work address, your work address is 174 Benathia. Thank you so much. Thank you. I appreciate it being here. I appreciate you asking me. Something has come up. I'm going to try not to overload you with too much information, but House Bill 379 was passed by the legislature this year and it went into effect September 1st. Shortly thereafter, we started getting a lot of calls from hotels because what this bill did was to redefine what, who is responsible for paying the sales taxes in the state of Mississippi when booking a room, as far as paying it to the state and then trickle down to wherever it goes, accounting to Sydney, whatever. Anyway, the, it redefined and it said, it said to create Mississippi Marketplace Facilitator Act and to revise the definition of the terms retailer and retail sale under the sales tax law. And it does, it defines some words in the issue of this legislation, third-party facilitators, third-party retailers, third-party marketplace. And what these are basically are companies like Expedia.com and I will tell you, you'll be surprised at how many companies Expedia really is, and also Airbnb. That's what it is to capture all the taxes due that should have been, should be being collected by these third parties. You'll hear in the past they were called TPI, Third Party Intermediaries, or OTAs, online travel agents, but that's what all of these are. And before I go further, I would tell you, because it's not just Expedia, but Expedia owns following companies: Egentia, Expedia, Hotels.com, Hotwire, Numinous, Orbitz, and Travelstake.
One company.
One company, yes. They basically buy the competition. Can you give us at least a reason? I will. I definitely will, you know. And so that, that makes them really big, but not me, they're there, they are there too, and I'm going to get to them in a minute. But, so when this law went into effect, all the hotels started getting email from Expedia, telling them, and there are different ways to book on Expedia in most of the TPIs. A consumer goes there and they're looking for a certain hotel or just looking for, you know, what's available. When they decide to find their hotel, they'll see different rates, much like the hotels themselves do, but they'll see different rates. And for instance, the lowest rate is probably going to be booked, although they're all through Expedia, but the money will be collected by Expedia. And it's very unlikely that that is going to be modified after that. They'll, once it's booked, it's booked, non-cancellable. But you'll also have the opportunity, maybe a slightly higher rate, to book through Expedia, but the hotel collects the money. Like, maybe they didn't even find it, but you don't want it to, you know, their money's hanging. And so they, they say, well, no, we just want to pay the hotel. And so still get their credit card, but they're going to pay, the money's going to be collected by the hotel. And so the difference is EC is Expedia collects, HC is hotel collects. Now, that's Expedia's. So, they sent out an email and told different hotels that what was coming up and on all HC bookings, hotel collects bookings, that the hotel will collect the following taxes. It's the general sales tax, seven percent. And then depending on what locality is, if there is a local room tax or whatever, then they say what that is. Well, their email revealed a little something to us, and that is, and then following that, thankfully Michael Daniels, his family owns and operates the Ominous House in Gulfport, has six rooms, gorgeous rooms. And he received an email from them and they said, because you're under, your ten rooms are under, that you're not entitled for two percent of the five percent room tax.
Which is a serious decomposing tax. It's a local room tax.
Right. Five percent is a room tax, Harrison County Room Tax. And 2.75 percent of it goes to the county to pay off the debt of the proxy extension, and 2.25 goes to the Mississippi Gulf Coast Regional Convention, doesn't it, Spirit? And so, so anyway, Michael questioned that, that he wasn't responsible under ten rooms. And so he reached out to us. And that's the first we had seen that Expedia put that in writing. Quite honestly, we thought it was being collected on all properties. And so I wrote back to Michael in a format that he could share with Expedia and basically said that the new legislation clearly defines third-party marketplace and they all, they are hoping for all of the taxes, but that in 2007, House Bill 1248 exempted, and they did away with that ten-room and under exemption. Early on, when room taxes, you know, one percent, two percent, there was a ten-room exemption and then that was done away with. But then when the two percent was passed in 2004, for the expansion of the Colosseum, the, and the additional room, two percent room tax, it extended ten rooms and under again.
So since 2007.
Once that tax was passed, I remember that became an issue. And I think the, and apparently that's what you were affirming, to the legislature dealt with that issue and made sure that all rooms were cooked as far as collecting that two percent tax.
That's correct. And in 2007. They took it back? Yes, in 2007, it's the opposite.
Maybe since 2007, Expedia continued to operate as if the exemption for ten rooms and less was still in effect. So by my calculations, Expedia and all of these third-party sellers, oh, Harrison County, some other.
And, and they made it correct. Since that time, since this series of emails between Michael and Expedia, after he sent them, Expedia, what I sent to him, the information, factual information, they wrote back and they said, we'll pass those by our legal team again, but we're pretty firm on this. The next day, he got an email saying, he's saying, you, yes, that's correct, we, it, all five percent. So, so you have an email, excuse me, from Expedia saying that's correct. Michael doesn't pay. Not perfect. That's how we need to get back thirteen years of money that they.
Yeah. You know, who's responsible? Is the state tax commission responsible to see that those taxes are collected and if there are any taxes that were not collected that should have been, that they not be the ones to demand, hey, that's correct terminology?
That's a good question. I've been looking at, read everything that the board has sent me. They do owe it, this new bill you just mentioned, I have not seen that. My only question would be, until that new bill passed, whether or not Expedia was required to collect it or was the hotel party collecting when they did it. That's something I had to research.
Right.
That's new. You know, I think the county would have an interest and would be able to litigate that if there is an issue of whether or not, because what happens with sales taxes collected by the state and then it's going to all sales tax, not just those five percent. And so, but I do think that a local entity could have a claim. You have to look at it and research to make sure they have standing to file laws of taxes, to take a little research. I think you do have standing, but what, research, have to be clear on whether or whatever.
It seem like the party that collected from the consumer, the person who actually is going to occupy that, whoever receives the money from the consumer would be obligated to pay the tax.
So all the.
They are obligated to pay it.
So if Expedia did not collect that tax.
On the ones that they collected.
On the ones that they collected the money from, they should be responsible. And if any hotels pay off.
Well, hotels are doing, I mean, they're collecting it.
They're collecting.
We make sure it's clear.
Basically, what you're saying is that.
Because in their emails, they kind of reveal what their understanding was, or misunderstanding.
I know. What's your best estimate of how many ten-room hotels do we have?
You know, I don't know. It's not that many, but that brings me to the next segment, and that is Airbnb. Every single booking by Airbnb is under ten rooms. It's only one room. It's either a house or a condo unit. So, and Airbnb is growing faster than Expedia because of all of its money. It's unbelievable. All the young millennials, you know, they, and there's a lot of advantages, the feeling of the culture of an area, you know, and the rates are definitely.
No, no, let me ask y'all, there's also the issue, Tim, I think you're aware of this too, but it's an issue where people are running their second homes over the weekends, there are groups of people, and surely they're not paying that tax. So, that's something that maybe in the future might need to be addressed. I don't know if y'all have any information on that.
Well, we, you know, we do, and we have researched what other areas are doing. And for instance, New York City, the city, asked for a listing of all of Airbnb's clients. Well, they challenged that in court and found out that that was proprietary information. Shortly after that, Airbnb started collecting the money instead of the host, they call them hosts, yes. And, and so they collect money. So I've been on Airbnb as if I were going to list a property and ask the question, who collects the taxes in the state of the city? And they said, they do, seven percent general sales tax. I said, what about any local room taxes? And they said, that is up to the host to collect. The host quite often does not even come in contact with the, with the guests because they have like a code, a lock code, and they don't collect anything from the guests. They get paid by Airbnb.
Could we simplify this and just say the third-party seller, which is Airbnb.
And Expedia.
Right. And Airbnb is not, they're not putting their condo out there.
Correct.
And listing it. But a third-party seller should be responsible for collecting, paying those taxes.
If they are collecting money, they need to be collecting.
The money should pay.
I'm sure.
It seems to me like that would be tough for the.
So what do we need to do, Tim, to try to move forward? Maybe looking at what Harrison County could be, well, his own.
What I would recommend, the board is to first research and do a report that's informed the board's interest of whether or not, that way you decide whether or not you want to or do the litigation, you have to get the department involved. Two, the board would have an opportunity to make a decision about whether or not it's something worth suiting over in the past. I mean, if it's $10,000, it's not worth it. If it's a million dollars in certain respects, I mean, if you could stop it going forward, the first thing I'd
Tim, excuse me, what about precedents in other states? Certainly not the first state that you don't know this.
That's what I mean, she mentioned New York and.
Well, I thought it said, yeah, there, but I mean legally, you're like.
There's two issues. One is going forward now. I mean, I think the board might want to do an order for resolution and send it to speak all these third-party collectors or TPI sellers and say, okay, you've got to collect this tax. And here's a board order to pledge their collective Harrison County, and here's the law to pledge their collective. Now, first thing you may get out of that is admission by then that they have to do it, see by doing that. Now, you go back, once they agree to that, just my thoughts have a reading over there over the weekend. First thing, you'd send a message to them and they start collecting. Well, now you've got an admission that you should collect it. Now, this change in the law last year may make some difference. I mean, I haven't read that theory yet, but, so, whether or not I could come back to the board and tell the board whether or not I think, what it gave in 2007, now would be cost worthy. Certainly immediately, I mean, the board could write an order saying, y'all aren't here for law, you're correct to collect these taxes. Whether or not they stay, it's a different issue. It sounds like they realize they got a problem, you know, in terms of their, I'm sure.
There may be, and this is just the last thing, in the, in the House Bill 1248 of 2007, that removed that exemption, on line 13 of the summary, it said, "To provide that the definition of hotel and motel provided in the local and private law authorizing the tax does not include entities described in this act. The provisions of this act shall not apply unless the county board of supervisors or municipal governing authorities authorized to lend the tax adopts a resolution declaring their intention to include such entities for the purpose of the tax and for what related purposes." If Expedia and Airbnb goes back and just resets that summary, they may stay. With any, yes.
Yeah, that's.
So that.
I'm sure we don't want you there.
I'm calling you.
No, I think that, but Tim, you're saying you did the right motion and you were fulfilling that requirement, she referred to as part of the board's.
No matter what, from this point on.
Well, that changed, that changed it to the most recent amendment, in my opinion, based on what you said earlier. They are requiring, based on the.
It said all taxes that are due under the.
So I make the motion that our Mr. Holmes firm identified these third-party sellers that are listed and forwarded, that we need to collect for all the taxes.
So I recommend that if the next board meeting, whether it's appropriate or not, I will prepare an order to pass where it would be better than the board. And I'll send a letter with it, which was to an order, or to some weight with it, and see, adopt that on a number of seconds. See what that does, they change it, admit it, then you can go with it to pass and say that's something we can't hold. But certainly fix it going forward.
Right, that would clean that.
And then Bimbro, Bimbro, what's the name?
Burba, Vacation Rentals by an Owner. We have no evidence that they are not abiding, but they really, and they're collecting the tax, yeah. And I know it's complicated because every city and every state, you know, has different one, but.
It's their obligation.
Is there a legal question?
It's an appointment to, I feel, or a, or a, or a, or a, next meeting, so. Did you say that last time?
I definitely. Very good. Thank you.
When I talk to you, I talk about this.
To what?
Let's, Ms. Brooks is not here and we have, we had a mention.
Man, I couldn't find anything to back up saying nothing about signs of posts. And I know we go, I think the board's policy advanced signs of posts that were not allowed. I think that's what we think, but getting consistent, so we don't know what the sign of the post is, not the sign of the post. And I suggest that we, we just, basically what we've been doing, not paying. But I think it's a sister, it's working time, it's like.
Only thing is she has the burden of her claim. So she didn't, that's what I saw, she didn't prove negligence in any way, there was a man with a guard and all this were no signs. Now, it's up to the board.
I want to, Tim, I'm sorry.
It's up to her to prove her claim. She's filed a notice of claims she appeared before the board, and the evidence is why the county was responsible in this case. She would come in and say it didn't have guards, and it didn't, I might say it didn't have guard, or there was no signs out, therefore she didn't have opportunity to avoid it. And she has not come here to prove the claim. So, I don't know if she got noticed, but it's up to the board. I mean, I think if she didn't show up, the board could.
What I'm simply saying here is that nobody shows up to the board for sending evidence and such justify their claim more than that. Let's just be consistent with this.
I agree. I may add, still, for the future, this is happening to be taught.
Yeah, he didn't.
But he doesn't say one way or the other about his signs or anything. That's really important.
Well, it's important if that's, if we're using as a, as a criteria of whether we pay it or not.
Because negligence is the only reason we should pay, so we have to prove that there's negligence. There's no report and they can need.
Or if we don't deny a claim and they don't personally show up, just be consistent.
We have no report, she didn't show up, state the claim, what are the reasons the board can dispute it? Do you want to take?
Well, as Tim says, if we have not paid any, we have not shown up, then.
Only thing I can, that is going to help the board, the board is almost, they did get focused.
I'm making a substitute motion to.
Table. I have a motion to table for second. Although the vaccine office ain't out, I have a motion to carry. Under number four, this is, then, I believe this is approved to table. There's a different order, so we're recognizing him more as a property damage claim in the amount of $1,000 paid by the county or the deductible, $14,719, requested by Nationwide to instruct the proxy for reimbursement or insurance.
If I may, I may give a report to the board, this is the claim you discussed in the second session last week, when I talked about it, the fire protection claim where they had a high threshold, there was flushing, it's just, all the backup of the water went to, we, point of least resistance, the house, caused damage to the house. As we discussed last week, as exemption C, was exempt, the county, the building, in the course of fire protection, service on a fire hydrant is clearly the fire protection area. Based on our discussion with the board last week, I contacted Nationwide, I contacted Nationwide, negotiated that dispute, whether or not it would be fire protection. Nationwide agreed to accept one half of the claim. Mr. Moore will be paid this complete deductible back so people will, and Nationwide has agreed to accept half the claim, full compromise. So I recommend that to the board.
I would make that motion, Mr. Martin, is fully compensated, he takes no loss.
That's correct. Nationwide.
Right. I make that motion that we, we settled, $7,000, half of the original, I think it was.
It's in the order.
Yeah, it's in the law. I make that motion.
We have a motion to have second and under discussion, and we do about 2,000, but it's from understanding from that, and this is the first time that's ever happened. So, thank you, thank you.
Let's just shut them off slowly.
I have a motion second. Any further discussion, all those questions about setting out, all the codes, motion carried under the board's report. Oh, yes. We, at this time, have Casa come in. I think they're waiting in the, in the meeting. They, they, first of all, we need to.
Second, just to discuss the issues.
There, there, thank you.
As for both of them.
I have a motion second, all those vaccine. Try to see how many people are up here, coming in.
May I just make?
Yeah, go, thank you.
We need to just make a ready, a ready statement.
So who is it we're looking for?
I hope that they. Okay, we need to tell. I'll send it off. They go to the, they said, it's not like it's rough, you know, doors are down. What's up? What's up?
I see you. Sorry, they were on the side of the building.
In the, okay.
How many you gonna let in? All of them?
All of them, I need to spread out.
All of them.
Carlos, one more minute, they just still have to come in.
Sorry. Just, just, you stay right there, just stay right here. Okay, you can.
Hey, good morning, thanks for having me, I'm David, the director of the machine. I'm not sure what I want to say today, but just a quick update on how we're, we've never stopped, I've already been COVID, actually stepped up, we're doing twice over fifteen thousand meals a month now. Our target's to probably over one hundred and seventy thousand, compared to a hundred and fifteen thousand for the last two years. We did change the way we operate, we're doing, we still do our home delivery meals, which is, uh, five routes that church runs over every morning to homebound, helping disabled people, which is less three hundred and ten meals, and then do another four hundred and fifty or five hundred and fifty, depending on how many show up every day for grab and go. The to-go meals has cost us a lot more money, because it's ten cents for the styrofoam tray, and I've negotiated like, that's as cheap as it gets. So I said, just in our plastic cafeteria tray, compared to ten cents per tray for all the grab and go meals. That's also caused, um, a lot of people in the neighborhood, um, I think we're the, we're the good meal in the neighborhood, that's easy to come grab and go, so I think there's a little bit of, um, extra. They go through the line, get two meals, and then they come back, close to one o'clock, so we're spread out, we're serving for a two-hour period, uh, for social distancing, trying to do, um, as best we can, as compliance, as compliance, as, as recognition. We, uh, know, we, um, we're initially letting them have as many as they wanted, and, um, it's amazing how many people have, um, people that I would think are already on our routes, um, that they haven't called any person, that they want to appear, and so we started, now I'm thinking, what's your name and address and verify that they're not on the route, if they're trying to get more than two meals.
Yes. So they come, so, but we have, I meals on wheels, so on top of that, and we can, and we are, I think they're brand from there. And it's done with senior resources, you don't, that, one, yes, or, or duplicating.
No, I think it's, there's, y'all are limited at four hundred and fifty meals per day, if I understand, and y'all have a wait list, well, access to that, and, um, and I think there's people that are on y'all's wait list, that y'all, y'all just cap it off at four hundred and fifty meals on meals. And I'm pretty sure we, there's no overlap there, um, a couple interceptions to that, but, um, I, I have a list of names and addresses for every meal, we do have on our three hundred and ten home delivery meals.
Are you not paying many employees at the primary city?
Uh, for the, for the county, for the city, uh, we're, we are non-question asked.
Um, I can tell you that's.
Okay.
I thought we addressed that.
Okay, so they show up, um, uh, so for the, for the.
Are you counting your school?
If you have any, you're not.
You can put that question.
You know, of course, and you'll know when they, they can show up. Yeah, yeah, I bet.
If that was fair, yeah. Have a cup, is it equal?
Okay, I'll, I'll ask today, like, I'm, should be a couple for.
So, so, so for the, for the ten thousand dollars, last year we gave, I think it's for general, this year we're asking for the same amount. And the reasoning is short, is that.
Our operating budget is, we have a thousand, we have about twelve hundred and forty thousand every year in our operating budget, and this year it's probably going to go down as a result of the additional expenses, which you go in. And also we're not adding our fund rates, that's usually, I've added chimney and my paper, that's been canceled, that's, um, go get it.
Have your donations because unemployment gone down?
Uh, you know, um, because we have released that, I'm a little humbled by, um, when they first handed out the, um, stimulus, uh, the twelve hundred dollars, there were several elderly people that walked in the door with their elder children who wanted to give that, because they saw what we were doing on TV from W O X and stuff, and I mean, we probably had about six or seven healthy people that gave us their twelve hundred dollars, so, it really, um, donations have been pretty consistent with last year, even though we did not have fund rates. But, um, I think our demands were, that's, uh, that's all it gives, the neighborhood people are, um, getting it out of their gas. A lot of problems pressing for it, that's why our demands are so inspired, and they have been the last few years, so.
Motion to have second, second, have any further discussion?
Discussion, you have a month to say, David, one of my students, their time.
Did you find it?
Describe yourself.
Okay, okay, did they find a better person to get in here? Thank, thank you so much, thank you, pardon?
Well, they, they, I'm sure you understand the local product bill, work this one two over here. Next year the county will not have authorities contribute to your budgeting, unless that bill's re-extended, it's not, it's been quiet through the board, representing the board.
You want to, that's kind of, I'm just, I'm just, I'm, I'm. I'm really humbled, actually.
But you do need it, yeah, it's so exciting, so to. Check the bill in and see what you're quick.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, I'm, I'm.
Now if we can have topics come in, please.
Alright.
You want me to speak?
Hello, hi, thanks for seeing us again, we should really come and present to you all, and thank you for the support that you gave us last week.
Wait for everyone.
One name, one name. Stephanie. Two, three, four.
That's your first.
Four, seven, Maple Drop.
Okay, thank you. Alright, deal.
So, again, we want to thank you for your time and your support, and, um, spending so much time with us last week, and hearing what we had to say, and I know it was a lot of extra time for you. And we're all appreciative, and we're especially thankful for the resolution, because we think that it's going to lead to, um, us being the leaders serving, so we are just, we're so thankful.
Thank you so much.
I, I want to make a statement real quick, um. My name is Jordan, um, I used to, about, a couple of years ago, I was in CPS custody, and my CASA actually helped me today. I'm actually working for CASA, and it's kind of hurting me personally, that we're not allowed to do cases right now, I know y'all can't do much, but it's a, it's a personal thing to me, knowing that these kids don't have someone to show that this is not very good statistics. Right now I'm just looking at a thirteen-year-old kid, so this kid doesn't get statistics, and I just, I know y'all can't really do much, but just know that CASAs are important, and I'm a personal testimony of our CASA, so, just wanted to say that last minute, I had to do it.
Thank you, thank you.
Y'all take a video?
Sure, stand up here.
Stay up there. Let the P P right here, I'm good. Obviously. About an hour, we're. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll thank you. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. D X S I insurance is held in a position and, uh, watch reels of the seventy-one. If you can hear. Can I approach you with your name and your address for the register, please?
Uh, yes, ma'am. My name's Brad Herg, I'm a thankful child insurance representative. The mouth, I forgot. Uh, address is two nine hundred and nine thirteenth street, South Fourth, Mississippi, um, we're on the fourth fifth and sixth floor of the Bankport South. Um, just to give y'all a quick update, Cam and I and Patty and Jennifer, we're still working to do some of the numbers, Blue Cross membership, we did have a label, um, which is a good news. We're even pushing a little harder right now to see if we can get a reduction, you know, this year, a lot of the unknowns of what is testing, running, where, you know, COVID's obviously slowed down some claims, slowed down outpatient surgeries and things, we're seeing uptick in that now, it's, it's hurting them back up in business, but, um, it's still a lot of unknowns, so we're pushing Blue Cross to see if they can come down the rating of board, which, from a budget standpoint, I'd be able to just lower the rates for y'all then, and employees potentially. Uh, Sunlight, life, life insurance, dental and vision, as of now, they have asked for a slight increase in rates. We have gone back to them with competition, because we have several other carriers that have come in matching currently, so we're trying to avoid change if possible, and Sunlight's looking at it, you know, competition typically can drive other carriers to wake up a little bit, but let me know what's out there. So our recommendations, if there is a change, will come on the network the second, maybe, I'll make sure we email y'all ahead of time, see you know, hey, here's all options that have been laid out.
Right, when is this going to happen?
Twenty-one or twenty-one. So everything, if you plan your change, be rates, go in effect, make change with that. What we're trying to do is get ahead, because we're pretty old, I mean, the open enrollment's coming up very soon, we obviously want to have employees that correct options, but.
When, when the insurance company, uh, carrier, with, uh, our trust term rate and rules. Do they look at only part of that for the county's, uh, use of their policy, or do they look at general, population of general, you know?
Well, it's your size, they look at the county, if you're a large population.
They consider how we, we use.
Exactly, if you're large enough as a company or a group, or, you know, as a political sector, that's, you know, what y'all do can dictate your plans, your rates, and that, smaller groups, they look at that under fifty as a whole block to determine. Uh, so there are factors like trend that go into every rate, but that's just really based on what the cost of medicine is, how much hospitals are charging, as that goes up, but then y'all have a good plan, so that you trend at that seven percent for a plan.
I'd like to take a moment to have someone local, and he's working with, uh, Mr. Earl here, and he tells me a regular, very, there's a.
Speed down.
Oh, Lord. Here again, uh, he, it's very, if you have any kind of drug that's paid on payroll, basically, he will work with you, um, until he, the title, tyrant, tyrannically, so, you know, it, but, so I, I just want to give you an accolade for that.
Well, thank you, thank you, it's been excellent to work with us, so thank you.
Thank you, Brad, thank you, Brad. Number seven, election number seven, eight, seven, taking a dinner, uh, at, we go, we have to, we're meeting and creating the rate of the, the, at the same time, and for number three, the tuning, the, 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 uh, the election issue, same as the rate.
Motion to have. Second, second, discussion, round separate. But is this for you personally?
I can't, I can't hardly hear, Connie, do I need to come up or what?
Sure, yeah. Let's take a, we already did, we have a motion to take off, we have a motion, second.
We're in discussion.
All those vaccine companies, I've seen that, all opposed, I hope you carry, now, we have a motion to approve.
I'll go to approve.
On second for discussion.
Discussion.
So is this for you personally?
This is, uh, these, these, uh, uh, residential boards, are we talking about the. It's really coworkers, but they have another job in another, another part of the, of the county, which is, they'll be there all day, counting, counting and approving, uh, absentee's, and right now we're at seventy-three hundred absentee's. Last four years ago, we were under six thousand, we still have a few more weeks to go, a couple more weeks to go, so it's going to be way over ten, ten thousand. But some of the revol, uh, revolution board, some of the revolution board are also a coworker?
They're considered actual coworkers.
Consider coworkers, but they're not.
They, they all work the day, it's not.
They do not work, alright, but, yeah, but, but, they're really all a coworker, but I think it's, that's what they're all, like, this is what they're all.
They get a site, they, it could be a two-month affair, I'm sure.
I'm going to ask you this.
All right, here, uh, here the listing, should I give this to you, it's, it's, it's twenty-three, I know, we're still, we're still trying to get the question.
Which is my question, is it not a conflict or is it a conflict? I'm just asking, for county employees to be honest with me.
That's, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't really, I don't know. And they can have the, uh, they can have the, uh, uh, third was the third, third, uh, third degree, working, working. Anybody, can anybody, that's one of the, this, uh, this election, that's, they have, I think it's spouses, grandhams, grandchildren, those, 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 that, that.
They need to have. What a problem is if they're going up a county college, like.
Not be on the county college.
They're not, no, they're not, no. They, they, that is, yeah.
They can do it, they just can't, I don't think there's conflict, just service, and they cannot sort of do.
No, they can't, no, we don't, we don't, coworkers do or not, can be the best social worker, be the actual.
And this one is coming.
Uh, hope, yes, Dan, can I, yes, money, whatever, whatever, but anyway, uh, but, 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 that's right, it's evident, everybody does see all that, I mean, somebody, so, so.
As I said, it's kind of tempting, so, maybe they'll be there.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, we have, we have some names here, but we don't, we're going to drop out, you know, try and get a couple more, and, uh, because we have to have an uneven amount, they have an even amount. They know they're not on the block.
All those vaccine companies, I'll, I'll, thank you.
Thank you, very much, thank you, thank you.
I love your time. Number eight, it's in the, yes, it is, and it's called women's grant, but those are things that are, uh, all those that have seen.
Every hand here is, who has, um, election equipment on here? There is also be picked up on the inside.
That's the, I have before and afterwards.
Okay.
And then the ballot box is.
That's all we need for, is that all you need for the election? I don't know.
They're supposed to have facilities and maintenance because they do them from courthouse, they're the ones that bring them after they get done with all, and there's both, they bring them back to election.
Okay, but this.
How about we just say, amended to say, oh, please, some facilities that might be, that might be called.
And then it's red.
And then, thank you. I'm not that, I'm not that motion, okay, the motion, we have amended the motion to include, uh, uh, any other responsibilities needed by the Department itself and maintenance. So, second, do we have that? Have we taken any further discussion, although the papers didn't talk about saying I, all those motions here. Okay, and it's a thing agenda. Um, and this is, these are, uh, iris number nineteen twelve, the professional commission, and the commission with any on conference matters. All supplies are likely, likely to be raised.
Second.
Second, although the papers didn't talk about that. All those to motion here, again, number thirteen. And he is for the, um, in-county travel to appropriate, um, type of, that's what it is.
Right.
Second, discussion, although the papers didn't talk about that. Uh, all those that have seen, uh, he was, and he had a grant, he was threatened, and, uh, Jim or Orland as backup applicants, applicant agents, or sheltering, hazardous mitigation, or hazardous certification project. So, second, second discussion, although the papers didn't talk about that. Uh, all those to motion here, undersending. Okay, is that right, Mr. Iver here? Maybe we got that. You just, I'm sorry, you have all this out, making it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think all of them for, uh, funding and then.
Okay.
Like standing.
Item sixteen through nineteen are standard cases before the funding mission, we'd actually prefer the recommendations.
You have, uh, your motion, your motion?
My second.
Discussion. Discussion, although the papers didn't talk about that.
At some point, then we're gonna have to amend the budget.
Yes, correct.
Now, how does it work with a, if one company's got a bid on vehicles, how does that work?
For the state contract?
Yeah, but it's gotta be under state contract, because only one company's got the state contract.
Unless you can go, because we have good.
That couldn't be, you can't.
I know, after you're not getting cheap anywhere.
You don't think so?
We need to find out next year.
Second. Okay.
I don't know specifically about police cars, but I know on occasions, the state contract price can be beat if you call them.
Right, they can on different, on, on single cars.
Oh, maybe single cars.
Like this, I don't think.
It may, it may or may not be set to check.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Do we know?
Uh, question.
Yeah, let's go.
I know a question, um, do we have an idea of how to set up the, the way you have already?
Yeah.
But he, maybe you, maybe you should tell me.
Yeah.
Okay, so, what's the second, all those, and five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, one thousand, one hundred and thirty, one hundred and thirty-one, one hundred and thirty-two, one hundred and thirty-three, one hundred and thirty-four, one hundred and thirty-five, one hundred and thirty-six, one hundred and thirty-seven, one hundred and thirty-eight, one hundred and thirty-nine, one hundred and forty, one hundred and forty-one, one hundred and forty-two, one hundred and forty-three, one hundred and forty-four, one hundred and forty-five, one hundred and forty-six, one hundred and forty-seven, one hundred and forty-eight, one hundred and forty-nine, one hundred and fifty, one hundred and fifty-one, one hundred and fifty-two, one hundred and fifty-three, one hundred and fifty-four, one hundred and fifty-five, one hundred and fifty-six, one hundred and fifty-seven, one hundred and fifty-eight, one hundred and fifty-nine, one hundred and sixty, one hundred and sixty-one, one hundred and sixty-two, one hundred and sixty-three, one hundred and sixty-four, one hundred and sixty-five, one hundred and sixty-six, one hundred and sixty-seven, one hundred and sixty-eight, one hundred and sixty-nine, one hundred and seventy, one hundred and seventy-one, one hundred and seventy-two, one hundred and seventy-three, one hundred and seventy-four, one hundred and seventy-five, one hundred and seventy-six, one hundred and seventy-seven, one hundred and seventy-eight, one hundred and seventy-nine, one hundred and eighty, one hundred and eighty-one, one hundred and eighty-two, one hundred and eighty-three, one hundred and eighty-four, one hundred and eighty-five, one hundred and eighty-six, one hundred and eighty-seven, one hundred and eighty-eight, one hundred and eighty-nine, one hundred and ninety, one hundred and ninety-one, one hundred and ninety-two, one hundred and ninety-three, one hundred and ninety-four, one hundred and ninety-five, one hundred and ninety-six, one hundred and ninety-seven, one hundred and ninety-eight, one hundred and ninety-nine, one hundred and one thousand, one thousand and thirty, one thousand and thirty-one, one thousand and thirty-two, one thousand and thirty-three, one thousand and thirty-four, one thousand and thirty-five, one thousand and thirty-six, one thousand and thirty-seven, one thousand and thirty-eight, one thousand and thirty-nine, one thousand and forty, one thousand and forty-one, one thousand and forty-two, one thousand and forty-three, one thousand and forty-four, one thousand and forty-five, one thousand and forty-six, one thousand and forty-seven, one thousand and forty-eight, one thousand and forty-nine, one thousand and fifty, one thousand and fifty-one, one thousand and fifty-two, one thousand and fifty-three, one thousand and fifty-four, one thousand and fifty-five, one thousand and fifty-six, one thousand and fifty-seven, one thousand and fifty-eight, one thousand and fifty-nine, one thousand and sixty, one thousand and sixty-one, one thousand and sixty-two, one thousand and sixty-three, one thousand and sixty-four, one thousand and sixty-five, one thousand and sixty-six, one thousand and sixty-seven, one thousand and sixty-eight, one thousand and sixty-nine, one thousand and seventy, one thousand and seventy-one, one thousand and seventy-two, one thousand and seventy-three, one thousand and seventy-four, one thousand and seventy-five, one thousand and seventy-six, one thousand and seventy-seven, one thousand and seventy-eight, one thousand and seventy-nine, one thousand and eighty, one thousand and eighty-one, one thousand and eighty-two, one thousand and eighty-three, one thousand and eighty-four, one thousand and eighty-five, one thousand and eighty-six, one thousand and eighty-seven, one thousand and eighty-eight, one thousand and eighty-nine, one thousand and ninety, one thousand and ninety-one, one thousand and ninety-two, one thousand and ninety-three, one thousand and ninety-four, one thousand and ninety-five, one thousand and ninety-six, one thousand and ninety-seven, one thousand and ninety-eight, one thousand and ninety-nine, one thousand and one thousand, one thousand and thirty, one thousand and thirty-one, one thousand and thirty-two, one thousand and thirty-three, one thousand and thirty-four, one thousand and thirty-five, one thousand and thirty-six, one thousand and thirty-seven, one thousand and thirty-eight, one thousand and thirty-nine, one thousand and forty, one thousand and forty-one, one thousand and forty-two, one thousand and forty-three, one thousand and forty-four, one thousand and forty-five, one thousand and forty-six, one thousand and forty-seven, one thousand and forty-eight, one thousand and forty-nine, one thousand and fifty, one thousand and fifty-one, one thousand and fifty-two, one thousand and fifty-three, one thousand and fifty-four, one thousand and fifty-five, one thousand and fifty-six, one thousand and fifty-seven, one thousand and fifty-eight, one thousand and fifty-nine, one thousand and sixty, one thousand and sixty-one, one thousand and sixty-two, one thousand and sixty-three, one thousand and sixty-four, one thousand and sixty-five, one thousand and sixty-six, one thousand and sixty-seven, one thousand and sixty-eight, one thousand and sixty-nine, one thousand and seventy, one thousand and seventy-one, one thousand and seventy-two, one thousand and seventy-three, one thousand and seventy-four, one thousand and seventy-five, one thousand and seventy-six, one thousand and seventy-seven, one thousand and seventy-eight, one thousand and seventy-nine, one thousand and eighty, one thousand and eighty-one, one thousand and eighty-two, one thousand and eighty-three, one thousand and eighty-four, one thousand and eighty-five, one thousand and eighty-six, one thousand and eighty-seven, one thousand and eighty-eight, one thousand and eighty-nine, one thousand and ninety, one thousand and ninety-one, one thousand and ninety-two, one thousand and ninety-three, one thousand and ninety-four, one thousand and ninety-five, one thousand and ninety-six, one thousand and ninety-seven, one thousand and ninety-eight, one thousand and ninety-nine, one thousand and one thousand, one thousand and thirty, one thousand and thirty-one, one thousand and thirty-two, one thousand and thirty-three, one thousand and thirty-four, one thousand and thirty-five, one thousand and thirty-six, one thousand and thirty-seven, one thousand and thirty-eight, one thousand and thirty-nine, one thousand and forty, one thousand and forty-one, one thousand and forty-two, one thousand and forty-three, one thousand and forty-four, one thousand and forty-five, one thousand and forty-six, one thousand and forty-seven, one thousand and forty-eight, one thousand and forty-nine, one thousand and fifty, one thousand and fifty-one, one thousand and fifty-two, one thousand and fifty-three, one thousand and fifty-four, one thousand and fifty-five, one thousand and fifty-six, one thousand and fifty-seven, one thousand and fifty-eight, one thousand and fifty-nine, one thousand and sixty, one thousand and sixty-one, one thousand and sixty-two, one thousand and sixty-three, one thousand and sixty-four, one thousand and sixty-five, one thousand and sixty-six, one thousand and sixty-seven, one thousand and sixty-eight, one thousand and sixty-nine, one thousand and seventy, one thousand and seventy-one, one thousand and seventy-two, one thousand and seventy-three, one thousand and seventy-four, one thousand and seventy-five, one thousand and seventy-six, one thousand and seventy-seven, one thousand and seventy-eight, one thousand and seventy-nine, one thousand and eighty, one thousand and eighty-one, one thousand and eighty-two, one thousand and eighty-three, one thousand and eighty-four, one thousand and eighty-five, one thousand and eighty-six, one thousand and eighty-seven, one thousand and eighty-eight, one thousand and eighty-nine, one thousand and ninety, one thousand and ninety-one, one thousand and ninety-two, one thousand and ninety-three, one thousand and ninety-four, one thousand and ninety-five, one thousand and ninety-six, one thousand and ninety-seven, one thousand and ninety-eight, one thousand and ninety-nine, one thousand and one thousand, one thousand and thirty, one thousand and thirty-one, one thousand and thirty-two, one thousand and thirty-three, one thousand and thirty-four, one thousand and thirty-five, one thousand and thirty-six, one thousand and thirty-seven, one thousand and thirty-eight, one thousand and thirty-nine, one thousand and forty, one thousand and forty-one, one thousand and forty-two, one thousand and forty-three, one thousand and forty-four, one thousand and forty-five, one thousand and forty-six, one thousand and forty-seven, one thousand and forty-eight, one thousand and forty-nine, one thousand and fifty, one thousand and fifty-one, one thousand and fifty-two, one thousand and fifty-three, one thousand and fifty-four, one thousand and fifty-five, one thousand and fifty-six, one thousand and fifty-seven, one thousand and fifty-eight, one thousand and fifty-nine, one thousand and sixty, one thousand and sixty-one, one thousand and sixty-two, one thousand and sixty-three, one thousand and sixty-four, one thousand and sixty-five, one thousand and sixty-six, one thousand and sixty-seven, one thousand and sixty-eight, one thousand and sixty-nine, one thousand and seventy, one thousand and seventy-one, one thousand and seventy-two, one thousand and seventy-three, one thousand and seventy-four, one thousand and seventy-five, one thousand and seventy-six, one thousand and seventy-seven, one thousand and seventy-eight, one thousand and seventy-nine, one thousand and eighty, one thousand and eighty-one, one thousand and eighty-two, one thousand and eighty-three, one thousand and eighty-four, one thousand and eighty-five, one thousand and eighty-six, one thousand and eighty-seven, one thousand and eighty-eight, one thousand and eighty-nine, one thousand and ninety, one thousand and ninety-one, one thousand and ninety-two, one thousand and ninety-three, one thousand and ninety-four, one thousand and ninety-five, one thousand and ninety-six, one thousand and ninety-seven, one thousand and ninety-eight, one thousand and ninety-nine, one thousand and one thousand, one thousand and thirty, one thousand and thirty-one, one thousand and thirty-two, one thousand and thirty-three, one thousand and thirty-four, one thousand and thirty-five, one thousand and thirty-six, one thousand and thirty-seven, one thousand and thirty-eight, one thousand and thirty-nine, one thousand and forty, one thousand and forty-one, one thousand and forty-two, one thousand and forty-three, one thousand and forty-four, one thousand and forty-five, one thousand and forty-six, one thousand and forty-seven, one thousand and forty-eight, one thousand and forty-nine, one thousand and fifty, one thousand and fifty-one, one thousand and fifty-two, one thousand and fifty-three, one thousand and fifty-four, one thousand and fifty-five, one thousand and fifty-six, one thousand and fifty-seven, one thousand and fifty-eight, one thousand and fifty-nine, one thousand and sixty, one thousand and sixty-one, one thousand and sixty-two, one thousand and sixty-three, one thousand and sixty-four, one thousand and sixty-five, one thousand and sixty-six, one thousand and sixty-seven, one thousand and sixty-eight, one thousand and sixty-nine, one thousand and seventy, one thousand and seventy-one, one thousand and seventy-two, one thousand and seventy-three, one thousand and seventy-four, one thousand and seventy-five, one thousand and seventy-six, one thousand and seventy-seven, one thousand and seventy-eight, one thousand and seventy-nine, one thousand and eighty, one thousand and eighty-one, one thousand and eighty-two, one thousand and eighty-three, one thousand and eighty-four, one thousand and eighty-five, one thousand and eighty-six, one thousand and eighty-seven, one thousand and eighty-eight, one thousand and eighty-nine, one thousand and ninety, one thousand and ninety-one, one thousand and ninety-two, one thousand and ninety-three, one thousand and ninety-four, one thousand and ninety-five, one thousand and ninety-six, one thousand and ninety-seven, one thousand and ninety-eight, one thousand and ninety-nine, one thousand and one thousand, one thousand and thirty, one thousand and thirty-one, one thousand and thirty-two, one thousand and thirty-three, one thousand and thirty-four, one thousand and thirty-five, one thousand and thirty-six, one thousand and thirty-seven, one thousand and thirty-eight, one thousand and thirty-nine, one thousand and forty, one thousand and forty-one, one thousand and forty-two, one thousand and forty-three, one thousand and forty-four, one thousand and forty-five, one thousand and forty-six, one thousand and forty-seven, one thousand and forty-eight, one thousand and forty-nine, one thousand and fifty, one thousand and fifty-one, one thousand and fifty-two, one thousand and fifty-three, one thousand and fifty-four, one thousand and fifty-five, one thousand and fifty-six, one thousand and fifty-seven, one thousand and fifty-eight, one thousand and fifty-nine, one thousand and sixty, one thousand and sixty-one, one thousand and sixty-two, one thousand and sixty-three, one thousand and sixty-four, one thousand and sixty-five, one thousand and sixty-six, one thousand and sixty-seven, one thousand and sixty-eight, one thousand and sixty-nine, one thousand and seventy, one thousand and seventy-one, one thousand and seventy-two, one thousand and seventy-three, one thousand and seventy-four, one thousand and seventy-five, one thousand and seventy-six, one thousand and seventy-seven, one thousand and seventy-eight, one thousand and seventy-nine, one thousand and eighty, one thousand and eighty-one, one thousand and eighty-two, one thousand and eighty-three, one thousand and eighty-four, one thousand and eighty-five, one thousand and eighty-six, one thousand and eighty-seven, one thousand and eighty-eight, one thousand and eighty-nine, one thousand and ninety, one thousand and ninety-one, one thousand and ninety-two, one thousand and ninety-three, one thousand and ninety-four, one thousand and ninety-five, one thousand and ninety六 I don't know specifically about police cars, but I know on occasions, the state contract price can be beat if you call them.
Right, they can on different, on, on single cars.
Oh, maybe single cars.
Like this, I don't think.
It may, it may or may not be set to check.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Do we know?
Uh, question.
Yeah, let's go.
I know a question, um, do we, do we have an idea of how to set up the, the way you have already?
Second discussion, share, these are two different vehicles, but it's the same project, is it because you got money off of one?
Yeah.
But he, maybe you, maybe you should tell me.
Yeah.
Um, that's.
Two sources.
All right.
Morning.
Yeah, so we have.
The address.
We're bringing it up today. I don't know whether we voted or not. Never motioned back yet.
I think we voted yes, but.
Oh, that's the voters here, but I say no. I oppose motion carry. All right, that is the best as well. All right, we've got the number forty is order. Uh, now we'll see, um, uh, the county cares that funding in total amount of one million, uh, eighty-six, uh, eight, one million, eighty-six thousand, seven dollars and forty cents for deposit into the COVID nineteen five hundred twenty-seven-one dash zero 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 dash three sixty-five. There is a total amount that has been allocated to the county in a first grant of one question. Question.
Commercial.
Definitely.
That's caution. Yeah, how much have this paid?
Over three million. And then payroll.
We need to back to you. Maybe just break.
We're trying, we're trying, we're trying to.
It's a little bit under a little more.
That was for payroll. It wasn't. Yeah. Um, first part, that first part. Uh, we have a motion second and for the discussion, all those who have two five, I say no. I oppose motion carry number twenty-four. Number four is order a free request of change in court for a social purchase of two new stenograms, uh, quarter quarter machines and a new next two, um, stenograph at a total cost of nine dollars, eight hundred ninety dollars. Money is in the motion second. Discussion, all those who have six five, I say no. I oppose motion carry. Number fourteen is order any offerings of funding to the state. That's it, second discussion. All those who have six five, I say no. I oppose motion carry. Order for the number forty is order to continuation proclamation of existence of a local emergency in Harrison County because there is COVID nineteen adopted in March and twenty-two.
Motion.
Second.
Sure.
Discussion. All those who have six five, I say no. I oppose motion carry number forty-four is order a free request of state A to give the grants to keep you, uh, the county, the corporation to advertise the construction of authorization in the state A program of, of office of state A project number S A P twenty-four. Uh, print these twelve M fire the fire tower road, uh, county farm road and traditional school are making this overlay, road A, X C. Motion. Second. Second discussion. All those who have six five, I say no. I oppose motion carry number forty-five is order for the social history, uh, meal sharing for two-year guys in Harrison County, uh, landscape people meets forever and amount not to exceed eleven thousand dollars for one ten dollars on alpros and gold press. You already did vote.
There is.
I have to get to the vote.
But I think someone told me the word never got to them that we approved it, so they didn't move forward. You have a doubt, but you didn't know. Well, like you did vote.
We voted on it, but we didn't clear our excuse contract. So this is the actual contract that would be confirmed by the board.
I thought we had that as well.
Okay, that's something.
I'm very hard on that.
No, we both know.
I know.
It also has a good.
Yeah, we can't do that. Because it's he's saying, so, uh, we have a motion. Second, discussion. All those who have six five, I say no. I oppose motion carry.
Remind us, you said ninety days to get us a full report.
Yes, it's definitely.
Number thirty-six is order a free contract with working corporate for the construction of soil cement base on the law enforcement contract and our track in driving. Motion. Second. Estimated cost is four million sixteen thousand nine hundred seventy-seven. In the motion.
Second, jump in the second.
Discussion. That, um, care, well, they must, they are, uh, we have a contract.
Yeah, that are accused last week. He did.
We have a motion second. All those who have six five, I say no. Motion carry number forty-seven. Order approving the release of land deed of real property located at one seven zero thirty-six thousand street, Gufford, Mississippi, twenty-nine five hundred three, on program. Motion. Second. Discussion. Second. You have a voting on. Discussion. All those who have six five, I say no. I oppose motion carry number forty-eight. We gave an option to the residents in Harrison County, of Harrison County requesting the department of funding, which is a relationship declared in seventeen patients of state general occupation bond of one hundred thousand dollars exists Harrison County to construction and repairs and improvements to Marlin, Lander Boulevard.
Where's that at?
And authorize the board president to execute all necessary documents.
He wants it just because it's my name.
And mine was October sixth. I got a hazardous waste, but it dealt with after being.
But I can read the blue bar.
How does that happen?
No, no. I'll explain.
Yeah, that October sixth, twenty twenty.
At the time of the discussion, we really had to cut it down to, um, because we removed the license status statute.
So we have a motion and we have second. We have second, second, all of them. All of those, I think we had discussion, like you, all those who have six five, I say no. I oppose motion carry. We'll work on that section next year.
Yeah. I have another.
So I got to dump, I don't know what kind of statute it puts on that. Forty-nine, order approving budget a minimum in the amount of four thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars to zero zero one dash five twenty dash nine fifteen for prices in the parks, like, uh, parks department budget, uh, amount and actual state contract pricing for F Y twenty twenty-one, um, to purchase two trucks that I just approved. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second discussion. Did this go up or down?
This went up. The state contract prices went up.
It's probably.
Well, yeah. I think that's, um.
I'm gonna pick it up. That's what we have been two fat, two, that's five, twenty, twenty-five hundred dollars. Yeah, forty-five over twenty-six, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
And ten.
Couple hun, couple thousand dollars a piece on trucks. Tim, correct me if I'm wrong. Trucks are hard to find.
They are.
Well.
They're hard to get.
How long does it take?
Several months.
Well, we tried this front, these are the new ones that were in this year, but for last year's, he, we tried, we got bid, we had some shop around right here. We didn't get all those trucks. It was hard. It worsened. It may take them a while with the state contract before they deliver them.
Um, we have a motion second, all those who have, uh, all those who have six five, I say no. I oppose motion carry number eighty, is there a draft in the holder present? And letter and then the necessary part of the, uh, the policy request to extension until a few months to make sure the grant is sent to C five four five. Motion. Second. This is the patient, the, oh, bring it, the bring it, bring it. It was supposed to have been spent by me and the mayor and so we were just asking for an extension. COVID and, anyway, it's one, it's the one day where they take everything. Uh, we have motion second, all those who have six five, I say no. I oppose motion carry number forty-eight, order two, getting no other expenditures listed at every state, everybody's, um, now, if you, if resources in Harrison County, there is a two thousand one hundred and twenty-two, two, motion. Second.
Second discussion. Is that a, 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 a,[782.54]
Well, she's with a classic, for example, she rents every street. And she allows our public to still entertain and use it for their pleasure.
That's her choice. But this guy's only renting two or three spots. And all those two or three spots, he's not letting the public use it. Sorry, he hates to pay for it.
I also have a problem with that. Like, that's not a problem to me. These could be there two days. Hey, I have no problem with that. I just have a problem with the fact that one turn for motor has to have people from his board before he can go out and get his insurance. I just got a problem with that setup.
Well, he didn't mind running after getting approval from the D O law to sell here. Well, without a contract.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? They got a fair permit.
Well, that's not a problem either because he.
He had a pay for.
The place had a legal.
He had a pay for.
He may not. I don't want to pay for it. You don't want to pay for it.
That looks like some of that program. You kind of transfer an.
No, 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 sir.
But as you did know, there's not a good policy. That's not a good policy to allow the playground director to accept applications and so forth. And then he can't, we can't follow his recommendations if he has come to the board to vote DNA and we both know that a bit last time. This guy loses out on that. That's not fair.
Uh, I don't have a problem with anyone. Said that's why I indicated to him earlier, I can't see how you can dispute the opinion.
Absolutely.
The insurance. However, I do have a question. What Beverly said and could have a problem there that when you rent that facility, you rent it.
I would agree with you.
The time you walk over that facility, you need a pay for it. Because you go up that area that you're ranked is yours. You don't get to go and set it up and everything because in effect, if you're losing that day, you could rent it to someone else.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
So I got a problem with that. That seems to be a fair time to put this contract. If somebody's setting stuff up.
I'd also like to make sure that I have an insurance proceeding. Let's just check in insurance.
We don't have time.
We got time.
Oh, we don't?
These ones don't have time.
No, we don't have time to vote to make it fair. But it's constantly.
I'm simply saying before that he's at paying place, he should have approved his insurance. And I'll approve it.
I'll read a recess because we have priority.
We're on.
No, we're saying we can't rent that.
Oh, you could.
I could. Just for recess, if we want to get back right away, just we could have a.
I don't want recess for a second.
We still have stuff.
I would like to make a motion that we accept, we accept this contract. He that he have an insurance by certificate and he pays for it, whatever date he said that he pays to him.
When you date.
Tomorrow, it was on the contract.
Tomorrow.
I had a call.
What, what's tomorrow?
What is the, what is the name of the concert? Was it the 13th, the day is the 12th?
Thirteenth of November.
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 I was like, that's huge.
So he's got time.
I think he has time.
Now, let's start by the use of the facility.
We got time with, with, yeah. But you don't have time to vote.
We got, he's a major.
His abandonment.
He got one more second.
His abandonment is on November the 13th.
When is it supposed to, when is it supposed to vote his contract? On the family already has or?
It's already done.
Can I say this? No, he made motion, I second it. We go for it and it doesn't happen unless he provides insurance.
He'll provide insurance and he can.
Pays the day, pays full amount for the day he's serving.
Yep.
Well, it's all amount.
There you go.
There.
If you show any love, it's all amount of money.
And I guess that because I represent a huge group of culture, so I was just giving there. I think that's my opinion. I was just giving there. So can I ask one question? As far as insurance, when does he have to have insurance? The day of the event or the day that he sets?
I'll say the next five to ten day. I don't have.
Tomorrow can get it.
You can get it tomorrow. The next, I want to, next five to ten, seven business days. I would imagine you get it here.
So.
Yes, unless, yep. And if he can't get it by Friday, if he can show us something from insurance or saying that they're working on it or whatever, I don't know how long it takes to get it by.
Just a few days for something.
Just a few days.
I would say by Friday.
He can get that.
I would say by Friday.
So we should have it by Friday? All right, we have a motion. Can you put a second? We have any further discussion? Further discussion off of my.
I'm sorry, I said, I'm asking. The good question was how we make sure they've done this because it's too much for Pam regret or someone to always be chasing their payroll. Well, I know she does, but I'm just saying, we only want to computerize this if we've been making.
You shouldn't computerize it.
They were supposed to be on a computer.
Like four years.
We're, we're setting them up on the same system that we're doing community centers on, so they should.
Perfect. So now they don't have an X, a red X.
It may be three days before Robby had that, said that I had that certain thing they had to do.
We don't.
All right, so. Okay. Quick motion. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Anybody in attorney's way?
All right, hold on.
Damn.
We, we had a couple requests for, I think it was, for Paul.
I'm not bringing them, but.
I'm sorry, you guys don't know the man?
How do you all know?
No, I'm just, I'm just. One fair ground.
I apologize. I apologize.
Motion, second, almost like just thinking about saying.
Ah, ah.
Hello.
Brady, did you get that? Get that, oh.
I'm saying what I was going to add.
There was somebody.
Okay, okay. Yes, got another.
I have one more. This is. I will. This is, this is from the Central Justice for Nonprofit Organization that recognized the senior veterans throughout the state. They haven't asked for sponsorship and I get the solid explanation to bring them forward.
What do they do?
Now, they, they recognize our individuals throughout the state for student work for. Uh, we go ahead and justice, always have to do. They do, they have a fundraiser and then all of our, this is. They sponsor, I want to give sponsorship for.
Did you just have a question?
Do they have a name or?
Yeah, this is.
Look, this is, and this is just for record. This right here is one layer from our records. This is what we need to fix on these people. It shows they don't make nonprofit funds. And assuming their being a tax isn't doing their bills, they shouldn't have this on them.
So we only, we only keep the tips for people that have.
Well, no, I was just saying that that's, you said they were nonprofit. I just want to see.
I don't want to limit on that.
There's not. No, there's for trying to be nonprofit would be.
Right.
I'll relax.
It's a little bit of a brain.
You know, at one time we, if somebody will ask the video books and the special things for work, we don't act too.
I think one of the, I think one of the biggest things is we just have to follow up and I try to, if anything, I can see something there.
Right, yeah.
I'm second.
The motion is second. Are we getting further discussion?
I would like to just say catch when we do this, these things, just Parkin's know exactly what we give the money to. So he can follow up and go take pictures or request pictures showing our group of branding.
Here, motion, others have a thing about saying, I'm opposed. Motion. Okay, um. If you're going to have a tear.
My bad.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, wait a minute.
Okay.
Yeah.
This night.
It's all right, yeah. Go ahead, yes, sir. Okay, I have a request from the Parks and Reds manager to the road manager to, um, for the road department to motor grade and gravel road because around the soccer complex. And they also want District Two to pick up a load of sand and leave the sand and gravel and drop it off at the county farm, soccer complex. Is that okay with that?
How was that?
What was the first, road, gravel, red, gray?
The other grade, the gravel red goes around the soccer complex. I want the road department to do that and then the other sand department, Parks and Reds. Also, we ask for District Two, Road Department, to pick up a load of sand and drop it off at the soccer complex.
Wasn't he asking for specialty sand or was that something else?
Basically.
It's basically.
Basically, it's the same thing.
It was special.
Yeah, that was last year or something. That was still the last week.
So I'll make the motion that Parks and Reds could be road department.
Yeah, they pay them that.
I wish they could ask that.
Yeah, they pay them that. But I have a question. Is it a road? If it's a road, does the road department do it?
It's, it's in that soccer complex that they keep graded. I don't know why they don't have a tractor and a bonnet blade that can just drag it up and down.
Is that considered roads? And I, it's not a, or it's just.
The party.
A tractor. There's another tractor. Fairground.
The motor. By bonnet blade is.
I love.
Everything on top of a bonnet blade, I don't know why they couldn't do it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Why would, why would, uh, Tim?
Is that, is that on the?
He's on what? I don't know what it says. Tim's about an hour or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, they can do it.
I didn't realize that.
That's all it needed.
It's a bonnet blade, you can pour it behind the truck.
It's just as good as.
Absolutely it is. Absolutely. Our motor graders stay on the roads, grading.
Okay, so I'm taking off and leaving the request with the sand.
Yes.
Paying you much.
Yeah, I told you.
It's called a tractor, it's called a tractor in the wood.
Bonnet.
Bonnet.
Bonnet blade. They were, somebody, somebody was out working. Thank you, thank you.
You actually do a better job with it.
So then the motion asks Fairgrounds to do the motor grade thing. As soon as possible, whenever Mr. Frostberg tells him to do it. And the road department will take care of it.
The hall, another second, yes, ma'am. Before y'all move on, can I add something in front of board? Um, I've been in discussions with our county engineer. We, I would like to hire a testing company to start testing our asphalt. Uh, making sure everything's conforming in the benchmarks of the mixes. Um, I don't know if we need to put the boardies to do all that to you or how, how would we go out?
Tim, in the bids, uh, who, who's required to do the testing of asphalt?
Testing of the asphalt on contract. Yes, sir. Now, if we want to do any additional, and that, that's what I'm looking at, it helps on the roads, amount of money we spend on.
They used to do it and you hit with. We should, we probably have something.
Oh, yeah.
Excuse me, instead of a cover tractor, why don't we just hire another Jackie, someone who does that for us?
This is a, it's a specialized lab. Basically, you pull samples and you pull it back to specialized labs and there's only a handful of them that have that.
Now, they look at the mixes and make sure everything conforms to the benchmarks and mixes and.
And they got two, they're laying stuff, but three, you have seven.
Well, no, we will do, we'll do that.
With a turn of them.
Yep.
Or do you have some reasons to tell that we're not getting it proper?
Well, I just want to make sure when we, the amount of money we're spending, that we don't have the same old cave in operation. Um, you know, we're dealing with a lot more subdivisions now. Um, it's time to start holding, you know, the contractors.
I don't have a problem with Tim. What, what is, what is the testing done? Is it done and once the asphalt is in the truck or laid on the road?
You can do it, you can do it different ways, yes, sir. You can pull the samples out of the trucks. You can pour, pour them out once it's laid to make sure you got densities and everything. Jackie might be able to.
And my re, my recommendation is to try to get one or two testing labs on contract. And we can use them for pulling samples from trucks. We can pour drill. We can test concrete cylinders. We can, there's, there's a whole realm of big technical testing that are specialized lab functions. That we can get them under contract anytime we have concern about the quality or something going down.
And the reason I'm asking you when is if we can catch it before it's laid, it's on the road, then we can avoid a lot of problems.
Well, you also want, want, you also want to do samples after to make sure, once it's laid, you got the correct densities and everything.
I think on some type of contract is responsible for, I mean, contract itself is responsible for laying the concrete. And then you might lay a dent, we need to make sure we lay the correct.
Well, I agree with you. I don't have a problem with going out.
Like you said, the mix itself is one thing to test coming out of the truck, but how well you compact it is a whole other thing. You can be able to have those labs on, on contract tests. I think it was a good idea.
Well, Rowan, that we have a way to, uh, are we, are we doing any kind of testing on the road bed?
Well.
We do it way south.
No, he's talking about asphalt.
Well, we can use the same lab for all of those things we use it for limestone base and play base for asphalt, for concrete, all of that. Various materials would go to the same lab.
Some services stay good, truck testing.
So what, what level are we trying to get at? State level or county level? I mean, what we testing?
Well, you know, all our asphalt is, is from the state level, the mixes and everything. We just want to make sure, and again, we're not pinpointing anybody as far as, we just need to make sure. Because, you know, as a road manager or as an engineer, just looking at mix, you can't tell. You need to.
I know, but what level we testing?
Try to get to state level.
State level, yes, sir.
That's even with the subject. That's new trucks coming in.
I just want to know what level.
Here, I had those. Okay, so we have a motion second to approve our C or, uh, testing, uh, road. Oh, wait a second.
I make a motion.
I'll say.
Second, others, whoever's seen what they know.
I'll say.
Okay, I have one more. Um, this is, um, in fact, they need to be, uh, musicians with a mission, they would like a partnership there. It's also, I'd like to make that.
Motion. I would be back when I was a doctor, see what they know. I'll post that to you.
Is it, I am? I'm gonna, you don't want to break up your behavior.
No, God, no, no. I know, that's a, I was like that.
Okay, okay. Miss, Rebecca Pounds.
Yes. Okay, so, Henley Cemetery, we are having the same problem we had a few months ago. And, you know, this is off a cemetery, we can bury our loved ones free. We had to tell cemetery funeral homes, Tricia sent the letter, that we must live in Harrison County because people are taking advantage of it. It's going to be full and our other people aren't going to be able to use it. So we put up the signs, made the news. People were very upset about it. The sign said, you may not put, you may not build things around it, you may not put, there was beers, there was toy cars, there were crosses, there were makeshifts, everything. You know, people got very upset about that anyway. But by there this week, someone has built a concrete completely around two of their plots. So I was going to tell the guys.
Well, it all, but how do you reserve a plot if you?
They don't reserve it.
I mean, it's not. How do you reserve?
The people are buried, they all.
The, the family members, yeah, they're already buried. They call us, we are, all we do is mark where we want them to dig. And if funeral homes come and dig.
Are the new, new, new plots or the old?
Um, the popper one, not the old one. Old one is private, people pay for that. So I want.
Are you sure the old one?
No, they never paid.
They never paid.
The fancy one on the left, the fancy one, it was free too.
I said, that's pretty fancy.
I mean, that's.
I feel this cemetery.
Miss Moore and, Miss Moore and allotted that over to it and gave it to the county.
Oh.
And that's how, that's how it started. But, uh, the old one, people do have borders around stuff because it's all family that's going in it. But the new one is totally different. I mean, it's, it's.
So our guy, this is the part that's filling up now. That's the new.
The new part of it.
Well, the new part. Okay, no, we're not talking about the old. Somebody else brought that up. I'm just talking about the new part. So our guy has spent five as much, five times as much time.
We lack.
Maintenance is, it's a maintenance.
What?
It's a maintenance, if you allow them, put those things around.
So should we ask the cemetery? Should we send the funeral ones letters again to ask them to tell the family it's happening again?
It's been going over the years like that. It's every once in a while. I mean, it's.
Could just do it.
It's gone, they'll complain, but I don't, you know, the sign that says what you can and can't do. Uh, you know, that's something that every few years has come up. We've tried to pass the rules.
How would you figure it is?
So I guess, it's against the rules, it's official boot. I think I'll get mad at the line I did a couple of months ago.
Yeah.
But, I mean, that's the rule. It's very, it's very simple. It's free. It's a public service, but there are rules in order to.
How do we find out? Lives here or not? I mean, do they have to, Dr. McHale's?
Yes, you know, that is a reason they have to show documentation that they actually live here. Because we know that some people have not and didn't make the bed.
Problem is, last time they complained and the press picked up on it, so, you know, we did not notify them, but we just know way to notify them. So it's, it's, the rules are very clear. We can't put things on the grave site because it causes property, bouldering, weed eating and everything else. I don't want to worry you, Mike, so, you know.
All right, so just.
Just like that point, take them out.
So they can't be with it today or not.
But they'll get my address and I don't know those fronts. We're going to point about it, the process and understand that. That's, that it's. The lighting.
So you'll tell them that they have one.
Because Fairgrounds is.
While, while, while we're all within cemetery, I'm waiting to do an email. Uh, the county several years ago, we ended up doing a agreement with a company on the same, same Steve Day's company on the roadway. And at some point in time, the angel put up, the rather than angel to have a sign put up that interests, it says, been in cemetery. They've asked for that to be removed because I wasn't in agreement with that. But it probably needs to be moved to the cemetery or not. I didn't know what I needed to call it, but I actually just put it away.
I'll make connections to move it. Because he did tell me that's.
Second.
Okay. Can we just, I need to do that.
Just, just move it.
All right, just move it.
So you want it somewhere else?
I was advanced right up there, so it's kind of like an arch where you're looking.
It wasn't, was it brick?
No, it's.
No, it's.
And then the middle.
It's a metal gate.
It's all just metal.
Yeah.
Just like the one on.
It's a torn.
Yes.
It's hard like that.
So this, it's just like the one over there.
Okay, just.
That right?
You don't have to hang it.
Okay, then. All right, then one more thing. Um, you know, we had a full-time employee and we had a part-time employee who was not better placed at the Fairgrounds. Can we at least, what we got to replace, uh, Justin, at least? I'm just curious when that's.
When I talked, last time I touched a grade, um, he said that he was going to hire a part-time person when they started with the one classes now.
Okay.
I'm talking to the sense in, that's changed. He has the complex.
Okay.
Nice try. Because he's over, he's over.
Oh, no, I thought that too, but I went through. Each one of the four signs is a hundred and fifty pounds. People that are, aren't super strong and young, can't even work there. I didn't understand the labor intensive it was. I was saying that exactly to them. The maneuver of all the stones, you have seven hundred acres to take there, five hundred to perform it all. They have to hand shovel that maneuver.
Right, right.
I watched one guy do it one day. Stuff is going everywhere. It is the most labor intensive. They have to come watch what they do so I can understand if they were wrong when you say, oh, they don't do anything. Because I was kind of under that misperception as well.
Well, I'm just calling my agents, which are going to see where they've been pulled out.
Yes, you're still putting hundreds of favors. And they're doing Henley Cemetery.
I would hear, maybe since they have had zero events in the past six months.
Yeah, it's probably one of those.
You're certainly spotless by now.
It's probably one of those situations where people with accounting, that's better than having that need. And you're not having.
This, this, you don't have, they don't have to look at the stones and raise them.
They haven't anything now.
I never.
If you.
Why would they not?
I would suggest. There's not some kind of machinery or.
They tried, I asked that. He said all it does is, um, connect more stuff over here. I don't know, you're the.
This is, this is my question.
There could be something that. We have to stalls. If there's permanent stalls, I can see the problem, but some of the stalls are not permanent. Seems like they can remove some of that and then get in there with the machine and get it out. I don't know if I haven't been out there.
That's something you need to think about.
It's so tight getting in there. I don't see how they do it.
But that's what I'm saying.
Something less facing outside the order, if they did that, they couldn't have that stall.
It's, it's, it's so.
The perfect way it is. Um, they can move it, but yeah, I don't, I don't see them because they're not going to get their, the numbers of stalls that they have. If they situated it where they get a machine in it, and look, I'm, I'm, this, I don't know what I'm talking about, but if they situated it, the way they get a machine into it.
Talking to them.
I asked them about that, Marlin, a fifth month machine. They said they use the soccer thing like we use for the litter and said it just got the stuffing and lobbed up a tube and they have to do it by hand.
Have they never seen the road going, the one through the.
Never remember. Never remember. I was just saying, for example, Tim, if you tell, they buy the smallest backhoe, the backhoe thing that you can go through a four fifty eight.
They, they should be able to get them.
No, I'm not saying it's not something that probably, not for me, but if it, but there's something out there, possibly he could get to eliminate it.
But my question is, if you rent a stall, if you are renting a stall and you put your horse in it, should you not be responsible for mucking out that, that, that stall when you have to keep it there for weeks? Most people, most people clean their own stall like they have it in their fly.
Did you daily? But would they believe?
They have it, well, they put it in a, they, um, they call it, uh, teeth sometime. They put it in a barrel. The barrel is called off. There, there should not be anyone physically walking out the stall that is rented to someone else.
All right, well, that's what y'all done since day one, just to let you know. Do what you want.
There you go. I hope, I hope you don't let me clean it.
Yeah, it'd be the bathroom cleaning.
All right. It's the last day, but anyway. All right, can there be one? Does anybody have any other?
More, this, this vast need to be addressed in court now.
Okay.
The orders, governor's change, so I still have signs up. Um, you know, y'all want to take them down? I'm good with that.
Y'all have to leave them up, especially y'all. We got a breakout upstairs that I found out about my accident, which is still not being recorded.
Are they going to down?
Circuit, circuit, there was one.
Because I accidentally.
He's.
Found out.
So don't leave them up, just fully move them.
I'm cool with it.
And we take them off. Is it for all?
Yeah, we do. Okay, hold on.
Oh, when they see the public. All right, Ken has something to say.
One more last thing is, next year for cruising, we can get Dr. Ladd to take us on one land and row for cruise.
Now, it's a Google. It is not, it is not.
It's big time.
If y'all want me to take this, because as his wife now, I'm.
That's exciting. The last time I went by his bulldog, I think it's gone to the dogs. So.
Gone, gone to the dogs.
It's gone to the dogs.
The dogs are.
All right, uh.
Good deal.
We've had one today, so, uh, is there any other business that, that you can say?
Is he first down and then the mayor's passed?
Do we need to go to the last session?
Yeah, we can talk with the.
I'm motion to go into closed session to decide.
You have a motion yet second?